Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the NACADOTCHAS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. Our quorum of board members is present, and we thank you for joining us tonight. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Tonight, members of the board are meeting in a central location, and we do have a quorum in attendance. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment will have the opportunity. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. Zoom software allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen technical difficulties and ask for your patience. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. First item on our agenda tonight is an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, and as allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:02 PM, and we will reconvene in open session at 16:00. Thank you. The board is now reconvening in the open session at 6:13 PM. That takes us to our public comment portion of the meeting. Those wishing to address the board during public comment should have emailed a request to the district at administration@nacisd.org by 4:00 PM today. This revised procedure was included and made part of the meeting notice. We have one request to speak today. The time limit will be three minutes, and Secretary Mindy Winslow will keep time for us today. Mr. Jesus Mendoza, can you hear us? Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Limeburger, can you tell if Mr. Mendoza is in, has joined our meeting?
Ms. Fitch, I do not show him on the list here, here in the list of participants.
All right.
Probably thought it would be at five, didn't realize it's exactly.
Yeah, she said it would have, it was a, be a Zoom telephone, and that he would show up as a host.
Is he also checking the telephone?
Yes, yes. I'll tell you what I think we'll do. Is we will, we'll go ahead and move, move on and I don't know, Mr. Limeburger, if he can keep an eye on that for me, if he joins our meeting, and then I will come back. Guys, help me remember to come back as well and provide that opportunity.
Do you, do you want me to mention that if he comes in, or do you just want to wait and touch it later on in the meeting?
I, I think you can go ahead and mention it, just if it's a natural break between, between two items.
Okay.
All right, tonight I was going to ask Mr. Nermond if he would give our invitation tonight.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country and the blessing that you have bestowed upon us. As we are here to serve and make decisions on behalf of our fellow citizen and community, I beseech thee to aid and assist us at all times and under all conditions. God, lead us not to ourselves, but guide our steps by the light of thy knowledge, and cheer our hearts by thy love. Give us wisdom and courage to be truthful and transparent in our decisions, even though it could be unpopular at times. In your great name, we pray.
Come in, thank you, sir. All right, we've got some student recognition tonight, Mr. Limeburger. I'll throw the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Fitch, Trustees Dr. Trujillo. Tonight, we're going to recognize five members of our NACADOTCHAS High School Cosmetology Team. Allow me to turn this over now to Jacob Lusk, our Director of Career and Technical Education at NACADOTCHAS High, and he will introduce Jan Holland and the Cosmetology Team. Mr. Lusk.
Good evening, Board Members, President Fitch, Dr. Trujillo. I'm here in the Cosmetology Lab at NACADOTCHAS High School, and I'll just be real quick, and I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Holland. In fact, there's no doubt that the Cosmetology Program is one of our shining star programs in the CTE Department, and so Ms. Holland has some great news, and so without further ado, I'll pass the mic on to her.
Good afternoon, Board, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be able to be here and be honored for this. And these young ladies have worked so hard, and this is our, to my knowledge, this is our first time to get to this level. So I'm going to introduce each lady that we have here. First, I've got Emily Lathan. Emily competed in Skills USA for state, which first, of course, we first we do the district, and she advanced to state for barbering. She got third place and got a bronze medal for barbering. The barbering contest is a big contest. They have to do three haircuts, two of them, or all three haircuts, or two, the first two haircuts. They don't know what they look like. They give them what they call a throw-down picture, and they have to make that mannequin look as close to that as possible. The next thing they do is a freestyle, which is just, they just come up with the color and the cut and all. They also have to do a 70-question test that has anatomy and physiology and barbering, haircutting, all kinds of things on it, plus leadership, professional development from Skills USA. All of these young ladies had some of the highest scores, and our three, three of our ladies did have the highest score for state. So Emily, our Emily got third place, and she did very well for the barbering. And Emily did this too, all while doing track and everything else that she does. Our next one is Ariselli. This is Ariselli Rodriguez. Ariselli also is a senior. She competed in cosmetology and got third place in cosmetology for state. She, she too, that was a big contest. She had to do a formal style, an aptue. She had to do two haircuts. They have to do this big resume. They do their test. They have to do a description, typed-out description. Ariselli too had one of the higher grades for, I mean, the written test. She did very well, and all while she has been working on her state licensing. And they, all of these seniors, all of them were working on their state licensing testing and all, and every one of them have been licensed now as of April 29. This is my one junior. This is Anna Rowan. She competed in aesthetics. Aesthetics, for some people, a lot of people don't know what aesthetics is, but it's all about the facial, the facial stuff. And it's another big contest. They, they have to do basic facials and daytime makeup and fantasy makeup. They had to come up with this big fantasy theme, and the theme that she had was carnival. And she too had to take the tests and the descriptions and all, and Anna had the highest score for her, for her written exam, and of course, she advanced to nationals. And she, by landslide, I think it was about 100 points, and most of the time, the points are like by a tenth of a point, the top three, but Anna blowed them away. So like I said, she is a junior with a fleet march. This is Karina Hernandez. She's a senior. She's a licensed cosmetologist, and she competed in barbering and won barbering. She too had to do all of the other stuff too, and she also got the highest score on her written exam. So she also got the highest score on her practical exam for the cosmetology licensing, which is a big deal. So we're very proud of Anna, I mean, I'm sorry, Karina, and Karina will be representing us in nationals. Hey, this is Emily Leschner. Emily came to me, normally they start their sophomore year. Emily came to me her junior year from a surrounding county school and wanted to be here for cosmetology. She competed in nail care. It's also a big program where you have to do acrylic nails and gel nails and nail art and do all of the descriptions and the resumes and all of that stuff. And Emily also got the highest score for her written exam for this contest, plus she is advanced to nationals, and she's also a licensed cosmetologist also. I forgot to say, Emily Lathan, also she had the highest written score for the state board exam, which is, when you make, she had an 86, and 86 on that written exam is like a 96 normal. So she did very well, but all of these young ladies have made NACADOTCHAS very proud, and we're excited. I hate that they're not going to get to experience going to Kentucky or to, I think to Atlanta is where we would be going, but we're making the best of it, and they're going to do us proud.
Wonderful.
And also, I think I speak for all of us when we're saying we are more than grateful for this opportunity that you guys have presented to us, and thank you for the ceremony that we are having today, and we're so grateful for you guys.
I, Ms. Holland, if possible, I would love to hear a little bit from each of the students. You know, maybe they can just share a little bit about, are they staying in NACADOTCHAS? Those seniors that are graduating, are you going to stay here, are you moving on? Or maybe it's just what your favorite part of the program was.
They would, they would love to do that. Emily Lathan, she will start you off. So.
What are you going to do with this?
I plan on, I ran, I did sports in high school, and I plan on continuing my education at Prairie View Annem University, and I'm going to run track there, and I plan on majoring in education, and I'm going to, instead of working in a fast food or something, now I have my license and I can work in a salon rather than doing faster.
The board is now reconvening in the open session at 6:13 PM. That takes us to our public comment portion of the meeting. Those wishing to address the board during public comment should have emailed a request to the district at administration@nacisd.org by 4:00 PM today. This revised procedure was included and made part of the meeting notice. We have one request to speak today. The time limit will be three minutes, and Secretary Mindy Winslow will keep time for us today. Mr. Jesus Mendoza, can you hear us? Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Limeburger, can you tell if Mr. Mendoza is in, has joined our meeting?
Ms. Fitch, I do not show him on the list here, here in the list of participants.
Probably thought it would be at five, didn't realize it's exactly.
Yeah, she said it would have, it was a, be a Zoom telephone, and that he would show up as a host.
Is he also checking the telephone?
Yes, yes. I'll tell you what I think we'll do. Is we will, we'll go ahead and move, move on and I don't know, Mr. Limeburger, if he can keep an eye on that for me, if he joins our meeting, and then I will come back. Guys, help me remember to come back as well and provide that opportunity.
Do you, do you want me to mention that if he comes in, or do you just want to wait and touch it later on in the meeting?
I, I think you can go ahead and mention it, just if it's a natural break between, between two items.
Okay.
Tonight, I was going to ask Mr. Nermond if he would give our invitation tonight.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to live in this great country and the blessing that you have bestowed upon us. As we are here to serve and make decisions on behalf of our fellow citizen and community, I beseech thee to aid and assist us at all times and under all conditions. God, lead us not to ourselves, but guide our steps by the light of thy knowledge, and cheer our hearts by thy love. Give us wisdom and courage to be truthful and transparent in our decisions, even though it could be unpopular at times. In your great name, we pray.
Come in, thank you, sir. All right, we've got some student recognition tonight, Mr. Limeburger. I'll throw the floor to you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Fitch, Trustees Dr. Trujillo. Tonight, we're going to recognize five members of our NACADOTCHAS High School Cosmetology Team. Allow me to turn this over now to Jacob Lusk, our Director of Career and Technical Education at NACADOTCHAS High, and he will introduce Jan Holland and the Cosmetology Team. Mr. Lusk.
Good evening, Board Members, President Fitch, Doctor Trujillo. I'm here in the Cosmetology Lab at NACADOTCHAS High School, and I'll just be real quick, and I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Holland. In fact, there's no doubt that the Cosmetology Program is one of our shining star programs in the CTE Department, and so Ms. Holland has some great news, and so without further ado, I'll pass the mic on to her.
Good afternoon, Board, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be able to be here and be honored for this. And these young ladies have worked so hard, and this is our, to my knowledge, this is our first time to get to this level. So I'm going to introduce each lady that we have here. First, I've got Emily Lathan. Emily competed in Skills USA for state, which first, of course, we first we do the district, and she advanced to state for barbering. She got third place and got a bronze medal for barbering. The barbering contest is a big contest. They have to do three haircuts, two of them, or all three haircuts, or two, the first two haircuts. They don't know what they look like. They give them what they call a throw-down picture, and they have to make that mannequin look as close to that as possible. The next thing they do is a freestyle, which is just, they just come up with the color and the cut and all. They also have to do a 70-question test that has anatomy and physiology and barbering, haircutting, all kinds of things on it, plus leadership, professional development from Skills USA. All of these young ladies had some of the highest scores, and our three, three of our ladies did have the highest score for state. So Emily, our Emily got third place, and she did very well for the barbering. And Emily did this too, all while doing track and everything else that she does. Our next one is Ariselli. This is Ariselli Rodriguez. Ariselli also is a senior. She competed in cosmetology and got third place in cosmetology for state. She, she too, that was a big contest. She had to do a formal style, an aptue. She had to do two haircuts. They have to do this big resume. They do their test. They have to do a description, typed-out description. Ariselli too had one of the higher grades for, I mean, the written test. She did very well, and all while she has been working on her state licensing. And they, all of these seniors, all of them were working on their state licensing testing and all, and every one of them have been licensed now as of April 29. This is my one junior. This is Anna Rowan. She competed in aesthetics. Aesthetics, for some people, a lot of people don't know what aesthetics is, but it's all about the facial, the facial stuff. And it's another big contest. They, they have to do basic facials and daytime makeup and fantasy makeup. They had to come up with this big fantasy theme, and the theme that she had was carnival. And she too had to take the tests and the descriptions and all, and Anna had the highest score for her, for her written exam, and of course, she advanced to nationals. And she, by landslide, I think it was about 100 points, and most of the time, the points are like by a tenth of a point, the top three, but Anna blowed them away. So like I said, she is a junior with a fleet march. This is Karina Hernandez. She's a senior. She's a licensed cosmetologist, and she competed in barbering and won barbering. She too had to do all of the other stuff too, and she also got the highest score on her written exam. So she also got the highest score on her practical exam for the cosmetology licensing, which is a big deal. So we're very proud of Anna, I mean, I'm sorry, Karina, and Karina will be representing us in nationals. Hey, this is Emily Leschner. Emily came to me, normally they start their sophomore year. Emily came to me her junior year from a surrounding county school and wanted to be here for cosmetology. She competed in nail care. It's also a big program where you have to do acrylic nails and gel nails and nail art and do all of the descriptions and the resumes and all of that stuff. And Emily also got the highest score for her written exam for this contest, plus she is advanced to nationals, and she's also a licensed cosmetologist also. I forgot to say, Emily Lathan, also she had the highest written score for the state board exam, which is, when you make, she had an 86, and 86 on that written exam is like a 96 normal. So she did very well, but all of these young ladies have made NACADOTCHAS very proud, and we're excited. I hate that they're not going to get to experience going to Kentucky or to, I think to Atlanta is where we would be going, but we're making the best of it, and they're going to do us proud.
Wonderful.
And also, I think I speak for all of us when we're saying we are more than grateful for this opportunity that you guys have presented to us, and thank you for the ceremony that we are having today, and we're so grateful for you guys.
I, Ms. Holland, if possible, I would love to hear a little bit from each of the students. You know, maybe they can just share a little bit about, are they staying in NACADOTCHAS? Those seniors that are graduating, are you going to stay here, are you moving on? Or maybe it's just what your favorite part of the program was.
They would, they would love to do that. Emily Lathan, she will start you off.
So. What are you going to do with this?
I plan on, I ran, I did sports in high school, and I plan on continuing my education at Prairie View Annem University, and I'm going to run track there, and I plan on majoring in education, and I'm going to, instead of working in a fast food or something, now I have my license and I can work in a salon rather than doing faster. So, so grateful for that, doing something that I actually love to do. Working at a spa here in NAC, and I'm really enjoying it so far, but in the fall, I plan to go to Waco, to a barbering school to get my barbering license to go along with my cosmetology license. Hi, so, I'm actually trying to decide if I want to get my business degree first, opening up my own salon, but in the meantime, I think I would just work at a salon just to build up my clientele. Hello. I'm planning to, after I graduate, I'm planning to go into a barbering, a barbering school, so I can have a little bit of both, and then as well at the same time, work in a salon and learn how to build my clientele, and once I get my barbering school and my degree out of, certificate, I'm planning to go to college to get my business degree and learn how to build a salon.
And you may hear several, or two or three of them have said something about barbering school. A lot of them, I always tell them, if you go through a program like this, and you can go back to barbering school, it's normally a thousand-hour program, but if you go back after you get your cosmetology license, you can do a crossover one for only 300 hours. So that's why a lot of them want to do that, and it's just more education for them, plus they can just about name where they want to go with a double license like that. But that's why a lot of them are wanting to do that. Plus, you know, having a business degree is always going to help you in a salon. But, and then this is my junior, she's not graduating this year, but step on up a little. Y'all, y'all just, if you would like to ask her a question. What is your favorite thing about cosmetology so far?
What aesthetics.
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 What my goal in life is to open my own salon, but since I'm just a junior right now, then I'm just going to continue till I graduate to get my license.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And I don't mean to embarrass, I don't want to embarrass Anna, but Anna was one of my students, she's probably my quietest student. So for her to step up and do this, it's way out of her comfort zone, and she has done it with a lot of grace. So we're very proud of Anna.
Right, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Ms. Holland? This is Coach Farshid. I want to congratulate all your students. At the same time, thank you for your teaching and your mentoring.
Thank you so much.
Now, this after growing, I'd like to congratulate every one of our licensed cosmetologists. There were thirteen this year, right?
There's twelve. We have three that are, they're waiting to retest and all. So they're still working on it. We have twelve out of fifteen.
Well, we want to congratulate each one of these. And now, these young ladies who are so composed and so professional looking and communicated so well with us. We are so proud of them and their dreams and aspirations and what they accomplished with every day that they had to learn and especially where they learned it from, their master teacher. So we thank you, Ms. Holland, for what you've done to help these students to be their very best. And now they've set a model for every student to come after them, to do their very best wherever it leads them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was a tough year, but they did very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
I believe Mr. Mendoza has joined us.
Wonderful. All right, so we're going to, we're going to return to item four, which is our public comment portion. Remind everyone that those wishing to address the board during public comment should have emailed a request to the district administration today by 4:00 p.m. This revised procedure was included and made part of the meeting notice. We did have one request to speak today. The time limit was three minutes. And Mr. Jesus Mendoza, are you with us, sir?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesus Mendoza. I have been homebound for more than ten years with light retinin and electrohypersensitivity EHS, which is caused and aggravated by exposure to the sun while the microwave radiation reaching children in teacher's school. I have been violently ill several times. I'm sleep deprived and in pain all the time. Every day is a different torture. This is a horrible way to die. My EHS has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability. EHS proves conclusively that exposure to levels of radiation below the federal safety limits causes severe harm and disabilities and that exposing children to microwave radiation defeats the purpose of education. It is estimated that without knowing it, more than fifty percent of the population is already suffering symptoms of EHS. Children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, and even a director of the World Health Organization are suffering from EHS. Please see, we are the evidence that ORG. Despite the fact that electro-sensitivity is reaching pandemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark when denying and continuing misdiagnosing and mistreating with harmful drugs and invasive procedures, symptoms that disappear with just reducing exposure to microwave radiation. A law firm filed a federal lawsuit with evidence of household phones used by their children amid more than five times the levels allowed by federal law, when even short doses of radiation above the federal safety limits cause harm even to healthy and strong adults. And seven law firms are warning school officials of the potential civil and criminal ability of exposing children unnecessarily to harmful microwave and five-year radiation when an expensive hardware broadband internet is readily available. Some of the symptoms of EHS include pain, swelling of viral organs, swelling of face, head and eyes, symptoms of heart attack and stroke, rashes and loss of skin, flu and allergy symptoms, stomach, and digestive troubles, insomnia, vision, hearing, memory, speech, concentration, and breathing problems, cancer, altered blood sugar levels, impaired sense of smell, miscarriages, and birth defects. Scientific studies prove most doctors are confounded in the symptoms of electro-sensitivity with symptoms of illnesses including autism, ADHD, dyslexia, PTSD, heart attack, stroke, multiple sclerosis, fibromyalgia, hypotireidism, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, rheumatoid arthritis, chronic fatigue syndrome, diabetes, and major depression and suicidal tendencies, as detailed on the request to protect the children submitted to the Secretary of the Youth Department of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, and posted on the case materials, so JayMendoza@wirelesswatchblog.org. Org. Ladies and gentlemen, your prompt response to this evidence can save the lives of children and teachers and all the defense specialists and unsuspecting victims. Thank you very much for giving serious consideration to this matter. Thank you again respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Appreciate you being with us tonight. And we're going to return to item three C, Superintendent Announcements.
Awesome. President Fitch and Board, lots of activities and events are taking place in the next few days, particularly for our seniors and their families. Tomorrow afternoon at Nacogdoches High School, our CTE program, which may include some of the young ladies we saw earlier today, will hold a signing day event for students who have already secured a job within their field of study or have been accepted to a college, university, or technical school to continue their CTE studies. The majority of the NHS students being recognized tomorrow have devoted three to four years of study in a career field. And along the way, they've learned industry-specific skills, the value of outstanding service, and business fundamentals. This is going to be a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the outstanding program our students are taking advantage of at Nacogdoches High School. Also, next week on Wednesday evening, May twenty-sixth, NHS is holding its senior parade in downtown Nacogdoches. The parade will get underway at six thirty p.m. Our graduates will line up their cars and trucks at five forty-five at Thomas J. Russ Elementary before moving through downtown. Afterwards, the graduates will gather at Dragon Stadium for a senior sunset with food trucks on hand as well as a slideshow of photos from the class of 2021 displayed on the stadium's video board. On Thursday, May twenty-seventh, Malcolm Rector Technical High School will hold its graduation ceremony in two parts. Graduates with the last name beginning with an A through J, as in John, will take part in the ceremony at six p.m. Graduates with the last name beginning with a K, such as Katie, through Z, participate in a ceremony at seven p.m. The graduation exercise will be held at NHS Auditorium. And the NHS Class of 2021 will hold its graduation at eight p.m. on Friday, May twenty-eighth, at the Dragon Stadium. Guests will open at seven p.m. Each graduate is receiving ten guest tickets at the ceremony, which would allow the attendance of Dragon Stadium to be at fifty percent stadium capacity. Guest tickets will be distributed to the graduates during required graduation practice held the day of the ceremony. The ceremony will also be streamed live over the internet. Obviously, we're closely watching the weather since this is an outdoor event. Should the forecast turn ominous, we will rain, we have rain dates planned for Saturday, May the twenty-ninth, and Saturday, June the fifth. The public is invited also to attend a planning meeting next Thursday, May twenty-seventh, at five thirty p.m. The purpose of the meeting is to provide information for participating in the federal programs and to get value input with regards to content and services for the twenty-one and twenty-two academic school year. Nacogdoches ISD will be applying for a federal funding under every student succeeds act and the American Rescue Plan Act. Information about the meeting, as well as how to connect through the Zoom, can be found in the district's website at nacisd.org, nacisd.org. This week, NISD held its first vaccine clinic on campus. On Tuesday, staff in the district had the opportunity to receive the Moderna vaccine. On Wednesday, the clinic at Nacogdoches High School provided the first dose of the Pfizer vaccine to more than a hundred students. Both vaccine clinics were voluntary and parental consent was needed before students received the injection. Both vaccines require a second dose, which will be administered next month during clinic schedules at NHS. NISD is one of five school districts from around the state selected for this pilot program to provide COVID- nineteen vaccinations to students and staff. The program is in partnership with the City of Nacogdoches Fire Department and the Nacogdoches Medical Center. Student nurses from Stephen F. Austin State University were on hand to administer injections. Thank you to NISD Nurse Supervisor Kelly Poole and her tremendous staff of nurses for helping coordinate these clinics. And finally, one last item. Congratulations to the Nacogdoches High School baseball team. The Dragons finished their season with a twenty-four-twelve record and advanced to the area round of Class 5A playoffs before dropping its series with Corsicana two games to one. This season saw Nacogdoches advance past the opening round of the playoffs for the first time in eleven years. The Dragons had a fantastic year. Once again, congratulations to our baseball boys. President Fitch, I can keep going on and on and on, but those are the highlights I wanted to share with you and the board.
That's fantastic. What an exciting time. All right, that will take us to our consent agenda, board members. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter and it will be set aside for further discussion in a separate vote. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'm moved to accept and approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Nermond.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Reverend Urban. We've got a motion by Mr. Nermond, a second by Reverend Urban. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And take us to our action item. Item A is your teacher incentive resolution.
President Fitch and Board, I would like to recommend from the administration that we pull this item. We are going to come back and present this very soon at another board meeting. I wanted to calm the minds up and let them know everything's okay. We just wanted to come back and present this. So we pulled this item from the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Item B, consideration of demographic services. We heard a presentation on this at our workshop on Monday, so I will entertain a motion first.
I make a motion that we consider the demographic services as presented by Mr. Martin.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So we've got a motion by Mr. Matoya and a second by Reverend Urban to accept the recommendation of staff to hire, I believe it's Templeton?
Templeton, yes.
Templeton to provide demographic services for us. Are there any, is there any discussion or additional questions that we may have at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. That'll take us to item C, consideration of revisions to the NISD Board Operating Procedures Manual. I believe that the revisions that we discussed on Monday were incorporated and you should have a hard copy draft at your place. And I will tell me the will of the board if you guys want additional time to review these changes to the draft that we discussed or if you'd like to discuss further or take action.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes to our procedure now.
Thank you, Reverend Urban. Do we hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. So we have a a motion to approve the revisions to the NISD Board Operating Procedures Manual made by Reverend Urban, seconded by Mrs. Winslow. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. That'll take us to our final item on tonight's agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mrs. Mindy, I'm ready for your turn.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Reverend Urban. Thank you so much. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your time tonight. We appreciate you.